Okay, testing. Okay, it is six o'clock, folks. I call the meeting of North Syracuse Board of Education to order on April 12th, I want to say. So please rise and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, indivisible, and just for all.
Okay, thank you, and it's good to see everybody not inside your little cell. And you don't have to look at my wall anymore behind me. You want to hear my clock chimes? Okay, I can bring that in here, not a problem, but. And welcome, our observer. Thank you for coming. And we're going to begin right away with our 2122 North Syracuse Center School District budget presentation, and I'll turn it over to Mr. Keegan.
Can you hear me okay? Thank you. All right. Okay. So tonight, I'm gonna work with Dan to take you through the budget proposal for the board's consideration for the 2021 school year. And we're gonna talk a little bit about our state aid and our federal stimulus. As you know, we got a lot of information last week regarding those. Our final tax cap calculation. Dan's gonna walk us through a number of considerations, things that are incorporated into the budget, including these recommended initiatives and additions and deletions. We'll touch on our fund balance and reserves, really just to highlight the district's financial position as we enter into this budget cycle. And also, we'll talk about vehicle and library propositions and then wrap up with our timeline. So last week, we probably got the best news that I have received in my time at North Syracuse. The budget was approved, albeit a little bit late. It was worth waiting for. We received a significant increase in foundation aid. And as importantly, a commitment to increase funding over three years. I understand North Syracuse will receive about $13 million over the next three years and fully fund foundation aid thereafter. You know, more to come on that as we know more, more details. The governor had been talking about consolidating a whole bunch of expense-based aids into a thing called services aid. And the legislature worked with the governor and they backed off of that idea and restored the expense-based aids as they have been for years. And this certainly is to the advantage of North Syracuse and other school districts, as some of these expenses are not predictable at the time of budget and in order to best serve, whether it be transportation, leverage BOSI's expenses or special ed population, it's really important that these expense-based aids be based on our actual expenses. And then we received a significant funding in our increase in funding for UPK. We're still learning the details of that. Dr. Leahy and I will be spending time working with the folks at State Ed to understand the the new funding and the requirements. But what we believe at this time is that it's an opportunity to provide full-day UPK for four-year-olds in the North Syracuse School District, which is a great opportunity. Looking at the numbers. Again, I apologize that this is not terribly big on the screen. I hope people can see that. Yeah, there you will that do it. There we go. Thank you. Yep, perfect. Thank you very much. So I'm so used to Zoom mode with multiple screens. This is, this is very refreshing to be here in public or in live. So foundation aid, biggest increase we've received since I've been with the district, a three and a half million dollar increase in foundation aid. I want to explain the excess cost aid. I think, I think the board is aware that we receive aid for our special ed services that we provide. And the reason it's called excess cost aid is that we have to hit a threshold in providing those services before we receive that aid. And our threshold's about $33,000. So every dollar over that, we get additional aid for it. And you know, one of the things we talk about declining enrollment, but the, the number of students receiving services has not declined and, and the dollar amount of services being provided has increased. And you can see consistently over the last several years, our excess cost aid has gone up. Again, that's one of those expense-driven aids. And so we're seeing an increase there to cover our costs, which is great. Hardware and technology, software, library and textbook, those next two aid categories, those are down and they're down because they're based on enrollment and our enrollment's down slightly. Transportation aid is basically flat and that, that's okay. That's our costs and our transportation department have been under control, as we all know, although we've seen an uptick in fuel prices. They're at relatively low levels. And so we're very comfortable with that. BOSI's aid is up and it's up because we're spending more with BOSI's. We're, one of the things that I think the North Syracuse School District has done a good job of is collaborate with the other districts in the area through BOSI's so that we can take advantage of their services. And so that certainly benefits our kids, provides more opportunities to them and, and the aid is up as a result. So our aid without, without the building aid portion of it is up about $5.3 million or almost eight percent. Building aid is down. That's simply a timing issue. The projects, the big Bear Road project hasn't kicked in yet in terms of aid on that project. But we will be, we'll be seeing an uptick in our building aid as, as that project, the final cost reports and, and whatnot are filed, filed on that project. One of the things we were very concerned about heading into this, the finalization of this budget was that if you remember back when the governor did his presentation of the budget, he said that New York State did not have the money to provide the schools with the amount of aid that he would like to provide them with. And therefore, he was going to use federal money to offset the shortfall at the state level. Well, when the legislature got together, a couple of things happened. The state realized that they were in better financial shape than they had anticipated at the time of the governor's budget proposal. And they also made a commitment to not use federal money to balance the budget, to balance our, our our aid that the schools would receive. And so if you look at that column, you see in the current school year, the 2021 school year, we did have a pandemic adjustment. The, the state government did not have the money to fund, fully fund schools the way they wanted to. They, we used federal money to plug that hole. They are not relying on federal aid to plug the hole for the 2122 year, and I'll talk more about that in detail. And then finally, I just want to point out that universal pre-K number. I don't know, Dan and Chris have been with the district longer than I have. That 606120 that we received in the 2021 school year is the number I remember from when I came in here over nine years ago. I think we haven't seen an increase in UPK aid in quite a long time. So the number more than doubles. And it, and again, it's, it's in an effort, I think, to be able to provide full-day kindergarten for four-year-olds in the district, full-day pre-K for four-year-olds in the district. We've talked about foundation aid and I, I think everybody here is well aware of, of what foundation aid is. The notion that schools are provided the single biggest portion of their aid in the form of foundation aid. That aid is based on the wealth ratio of the district and geographically where the district's located. And, and the goal is to be able to provide a sound, basic education for all the kids across the state with considerations for, again, the wealth of, of each, each school district as well as the, where those children are located around the state. And we've, we've seen this chart time and time again. The, the second column in shows the current year aid and starts with 2007, eight ends with the 2021 school year. And you see what we're currently receiving in those years or what we received in those years versus the full phase-in level. And so in the 21, 2021 school year, we were about $13 million short of how much, just for that one year, we should have received. And as you, as you can imagine, as we've put these budgets together, therein lies the, the pressure that we felt to fully fund programming here at North Syracuse. Over the, the time that foundation aid since 2007, it's, we've had about $177.5 million in shortfall. And so we're hoping with the, the latest budget as the beginning, that our legislature and governor will, will more closely fund foundation aid. Moving on to the federal stimulus funds. So as you know, President Biden signed into law in March, the American Rescue Plan, $1.9 trillion plan. And as part of that plan, federal aid was provided, provided directly to schools. North Syracuse is eligible for $11,450,000 worth of aid. We're gonna have to apply for this aid. These funds were not factored in to our New York State aid information that I just reviewed with you. So they're not, they're not an effort to supplement state aid. These funds were not used to balance the 2122 budget. They're, they're, they're one-time money. So we want it to be thoughtful about how this money is incorporated into our budgets. We want to ensure sustainability of programming so that positive student outcomes can be achieved over time. And we hope these funds will last several years to best support that programming. Yeah, fire away.
Question at this point?
Yeah, you bet.
Are we, we're in the process of finding out more about what it means to be eligible expenses?
Exactly. They have certain parameters upon how you can use the money. And we want to make sure we know those parameters before we start spending.
Would they include the 2021 this school year or?
Yeah, you could use that money in the 2021 school year. What we decided to do was to continue, we're recommending to the board that we continue to appropriate fund balance, which kind of is spending down our savings, even though we have some of this money available to us until we can put a plan together to properly spend that money in the most fiscally responsible manner. So our revenues, I say this every year, but this chart, picture's worth a thousand words. Our tax levy and state aid represent, you know, the, the biggest two slices of our budget. Tax levy 52.9, almost 53%. State aid, almost 42%. So you know, that's how we fund our, our district. Yes, we do receive sales tax revenues and, and some other revenues. Mostly other revenues are things, I'll just give you an example. You know, we have retirees that are on our PPO plan and since we provide their, their retiree health benefits, we get some reimbursements of Medicare Part D, which is hundreds of thousands of dollars, which is, which is good. We also, we always don't, we don't always spend all of our BOSI's money. You know how we have special ed students in programming? We make a good estimate in the budget time is what those costs are going to be. But sometimes we don't need to spend all that money. And when we don't spend the money at BOSI's, BOSI's is not allowed to keep that money. They have to refund it back to us. So in each year, subsequent year, we get BOSI's refunds and those make up part of other revenue. As you can see, our fund balance, we're gonna use $5 million. I recommend we use $5 million worth of fund balance this year. Looking at, you know, just numbers and comparative, again, there's that $5.3 million of general state aid increase. Pilots are relatively flat. We knock down our interest expense. We've been very hopeful that, you know, we've tried a couple of strategies to get more interest income, but the interest rate environment is, is still relatively low and it's just really hard to, to get to 450. We're gonna fall short of that this year. And so that'll be one of our unfavorable budget variances. But in speaking with Vince Love, our treasurer, we thought $100,000 was reasonable. Again, we're bumping that fund balance appropriation from four to $5 million. It's so that we can balance the budget, meet the critical needs that Dan's gonna talk to us about tonight. And also not dip into that federal spending money until we have a good plan to do so. The building aid, as I've already mentioned, is, is down a little bit and our tax levy I'll talk about now. So you've seen this before, our final tax cap, this is using the formula prescribed by the Controller's Office. We are gonna, we're recommending a 3.05% tax levy increase. That is, would require one more yes vote than no vote. It's about a $71 increase on $100,000 home before star. And that's what this chart attempts to, to show. And one thing that's interesting and we've seen this, we see it every year, that our assessments continue to increase. We're in, two of our towns are full value assessed towns. We have no control over that. But what often happens is the tax rate that we quote in the, at the time of the budget is actually lower, is actually higher than what the actual tax rate comes out on the tax bills when they're sent to families at the end of next summer. Or at the end of this summer, I should say. So we're looking at about a $71 increase or about $5.92 a month. Regardless of which town you live in, the annual school tax bill on a house that has a full value of $100,000 is about $2,414. Again, before star. Moving on to expenditures. Again, I say this every year, we're a people-based business. Most important thing we do is put adults in front of children. And, and that's what this budget indicates is that we spend the majority of our, of our money on people-based, on personnel. We spent a lot of money with BOSI's. We've, we've gone over 18 million in our BOSI's budget. Again, the biggest components of that are special education, technology and instructional, instructional materials. We also use BOSI's for a number of critical administrative services, whether it be our accounting system, our wind cap system. We engage BOSI's to help us manage our food service operations. You know, they, they are, they do a great job providing those critical support elements that we need to operate a school. And it's, they, they certainly, by supporting many school districts, they're able to achieve economies of scale that, that we just can't achieve. We will, I want to just point out again, we'll do $100,000 project. Matter of fact, Cabinet tomorrow will be talking a little bit more about that, that project. Every year we've done this year, if you haven't been over to Allen Road yet, they just finished the the reconfiguration of the lobby there to make it a little bit of more of a secure, single point of entry. And that, that came out nice, that came out really was done well and, and was a good addition to that building. And we'll, we'll embark on another project, more to come on that. Expenditures. Again, when you, when you see Dan's presentation, you're gonna realize that not only did we, we provide contractual increases that were previously negotiated, but we're adding personnel to deal with some of the critical situations that we're facing as a result of COVID. And so it's a big investment. I'm, once again, very proud of the job that our Health Oversight Committee is doing and our, our consultants on the benefit side. We've, we've seen consistently below market average increases in our benefits, largely due to really good administration by those folks. You do see the increase, modest increase in BOSI's and, and contractual. We put in additional equipment funds here, just like our buildings where there, you know, we've got aging infrastructure. You know, we have some critical equipment needs across the district and as, as our, whether it be Chris and Dan out in the buildings, our principals, working with directors, we're seeing where there just needs to be modifications to create more collaborative environments. And rather than doing a whole big rebuilding model, remodel at, at this time, we're talking about just going into areas like libraries and refurnishing them properly and making some, some changes like that. So we added some additional money in the equipment area. And additional supplies. One of the things we're seeing on the supply side is, and Dan's gonna talk a little bit about this. As much as we're all thrilled that we're getting our vaccines for COVID, COVID's not over and, and we are continuing to spend money on, on critical cleaning supplies and equipment.
Yeah. On the slide before that, it says equipment for 757, 900.
Yeah.
And then this one is six. Is that a different equipment in the slide before?
No, it looks like I made an error in the slide. I apologize.
Okay.
I didn't know if it was. No, that's a, that's a mistake on my part. I don't know how I did that. But I'll thank you, George. Good catch. We, we got these numbers last week and we were running them through. I, I must have just missed, miskeyed. But the, but thank you. And you know what it is, George? I miskeyed the equipment number on this slide. This, the 757 is the correct number. But, but thank you. I'll, I'll fix that. With that, I'll turn it over to, to Dan to talk about considerations impacting expenditures.
So we had a few meetings with the Budget Board Subcommittee again, waiting for the governor's budget, which came out late. But one of the, several of the priorities, support for student learning, especially during COVID, is a priority that you'll see in the budget, in the recommendations. Social emotional needs, SEL, I think we've seen on the news and throughout our system and, and many systems, the needs of our students and families and our staff, just given the pandemic. As Don was mentioning, ongoing management of COVID-19 and just health and safety protocols, which we factored into the budget. And just some changes in such instructional practices and the tools that we're using, licensing of different things such as with Zoom, Google Meets, ClassLink, all of the above. So some of the initiatives, and I'll start with the, the one on top, it looks like that is the Director of Math. That's something that was a priority a year ago. Then the pandemic hit and things changed financially. So we're looking to make sure that we have a Director of Mathematics as we're looking to make increases in how we're performing as a large district K through 12. Also looking at several AIS teachers to support the elementary and middle schools based on need. This way, we can assign these AIS supports to the buildings based on the assessments that we, that we do. In the past, we've kind of just had people stationed. We will move around people based on the need. So if there's a higher need in one building next year and/or a year after, they may have three or four AIS teachers or next year they could have five. We will move them based on the needs. Looking at four teachers on special assignment, they're listed as what they call TOSSs. Now, one of the things that we're doing is we are also embarking on a K4 ELA initiative. So some of the jobs of these TOSSs may be a little bit different than in the past, but two of the TOSSs will be able to support some of the ELA initiatives and split them between two of the buildings. And two of the other TOSSs, one would be full-time at Roxell, and that's our neatest building. And another full-time would be at Smith Road that also has high needs because of several special education programs, ELL, and it is the second highest need building that we have in our elementary. When we talk about Tier Two and Tier Three Phonics Intervention, one of the areas that we've identified as a need is to beef up what we're doing with phonics in our system. I mentioned the K4 ELA program. But the next slide, talk, or the next bullet, talks about elementary summer program. We haven't had a summer program for elementary in quite some time. And what we're looking to do is to offer, based on criteria, a summer program for K through seven that we're looking at the dynamics of how to roll that out as far as how many weeks and, but it would probably be a four-day-a-week program for two and a half hours a day for the students and targeting ELA and math. And the particulars, we're still working out with the conversations with the NCA. Continuation of BOSI Summer School, we've, we've worked with BOSI's and we will continue with that at the secondary level. But there are other issues that we will also work on at the secondary level regarding summer programs. One of them is expanded credit recovery. So credit recovery is a basically a summer program or all-year program. But you have this child working on a program at their pace. And it's really been helpful because the student can go as fast as they need to, to try to recover the credit that they hadn't earned and they can have teacher support in doing that. This area, I'm, I'm really excited to see, and it's the addition of 12 elementary teaching assistants with a focus on first grade. We've known that there have been other districts that have put some resources into this grade level when we're trying to ensure that students learn how to read and, and, and could be reading, it could be math, it could be a number of things. But looking to provide two per building, we have six elementary schools. So that way, we can ensure that our first grade are getting what they need as they work through the year. Three special education teachers to support CTD classes. Basically, it's to balance out. We've been supporting some of these programs. When a CTD teacher cannot be in a classroom, we've been supporting them, putting a teaching assistant in the opposite room. We're trying to make it whole. We're there, so we needed three special education CTD teachers to do this. The ENL teacher 1.0, I've been talking with Mr. London. Based on the numbers, we haven't been able to give what they call the nicest slot exam. And that's where the students, it lets us know whether they've made growth or they can test out. So we are having a kind of a bubble between the junior high and high school. So there's going to be a need to meet their needs because it's mandated. The increase in a section of each special at the Rox Mill, that's due to enrollment. That's pretty standard. So this is one of the things in social emotional needs is one of the priorities I've talked to the board about often. And everyone has seen and heard what the needs are in our district and many districts around and what's, what's been going on for students. So as the second largest district in the county, trying to make sure we're matching the needs of students, families. So looking to add two social workers at the high school. There was a school counselor at the junior high that was cut several years ago. So we're reinstituting that school counselor along with that school counselor at the junior high. The school counselor secretary also was cut, so reinstating that as well. And looking at our partnerships with contact, they are providing a, a person for half of the year. So we're trying to make sure with the shared cost, we keep that person for the entire year, just as a, as a person, a student assistance counselor. Roxborough Road, a family engagement specialist. Roxborough Road, the middle school is what they call a TSI school and the elementary is a CSI school. Basically, they qualify based on the state with their, their needs and need base for some funding and due to the things that they have to do for the state to meet their, their goals. Having someone that can work as a family engagement specialist, working on attendance, connecting to services, working to ensure that different needs with the family are met so that the student can go to school and thrive. Restorative practice specialists, again, the Roxborough campus. One of the things that we've learned is when we're working on behaviors and working on trying to have students learn from what's going on, instead of just doling out a consequence and there's no learning that takes place. When you're talking about restorative practice, where it takes more time and working with the student to have them learn what's happened with what has, what they've done and then move forward. So we're looking at having a person at each building and it's part of their plan with the state in their TSI and CSI program. Some of these others are program implementation from Lisa Goldberg, Second Step, that you've heard her talk about. BIMAS, Ruler, and also having some funds to, to bring in speakers. We had Mark Brackett here, a well-known SEL person from Yale. So trying to make those connections so that we can provide things for our staff. Other additions that we've talked about and several of us have had worked in. had worked in this area, addition of a district nurse supervisor. There are a few districts that have this nurse supervisor, and given where we are with the pandemic, there's been many things that we could turn over to a nurse supervisor that we've had to assume ourselves in many different aspects. And so I know Syracuse City, we have Beeville, several districts have this, and we're looking to add this person to our ranks. Talk about ongoing testing, coordinating, testing within our buildings. We did that first when we were recognized as being in the yellow zone. So as we're bringing more students back, we're looking to have testing in our buildings again. Offering our schools as vaccination sites. This is new. In the meeting that I was in last week, the county is looking for our sixteen and seventeen-year-olds right now to be able to do that within our schools. A survey went out to parents of those students, and I saw results as of this morning. So that's, you will be hearing more about that in the rollout of that at this time. For sixteen and seventeen, just as a point of clarification, those students can only get the Pfizer vaccine. Moderna has not been approved for students below eighteen. And a continued focus on our cleaning and ventilation strategies that improve the health of our environment. To the next slide, other items that are impacting the budget. It was a reduction of seven elementary teachers based on class size. I believe with the Budget Board Subcommittee are, there were some enrollment issues, so there were changes there. There was a savings in regard to a change in the new prescription drug plan for our retirees. But we were able to save some money there and retain some positions. Reduction of seven teaching assistants, subject to the completion of CSC meetings. Our CSC meetings will continue on into June, but we're already seeing that there could be a reduction. That may change based on some of the CSC meetings, but that's what we're seeing as of this time. Looking at increase in equipment budgets to support improved learning. Matt Irwin has gone to each building and talked to building principals as far as needs and, and equipment needs as we're moving through. Looks like we had a cross-country modified head coach that had been cut down over the years, so reinstating, reinstating that. Looking at some additional funds for paving. Excuse me. If you've ever driven in the high school and some of the parking lots, looking to really try to improve some of the conditions of our, of our locations. And the last two, we've looked at a custodial trainer, a summer crew leader, and also a maintenance crew leader, and I, I was inquiring about the maintenance crew leader. And if everyone remembers, there was an individual, Jim Pops. So it's been about five years that this position's been vacant. We, so we've been, we've been shy or down, down a person over the years, and so trying to put those things back into place. And Don, I will turn it back to you.
Any questions before we continue with the financial piece? Okay, I, I, we wanted to share with you the fund balance and just, just remind the board that we, our fund balance has, is projected to be about four percent, three point nine four percent of the proposed budget for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, that a hundred and eighty million number. We are proposing to appropriate five million dollars for the fund balance. That is an increase. Our, our concern is somewhat mitigated by the fact that we have this federal stimulus money that we will be bringing in within the next year, and we feel that in order to balance this budget and pay for all the things that Dan has articulated here, we need to just dip into fund balance a little deeper. But we are, we are in good shape. We are also, just our balance sheet in general, in terms of reserves, you know, I always say this, that our reserves are to cover real liabilities that we're aware of, and we need to make sure that we have funds set aside for. One of the things that has, that bit our district and has bit others is that as our ERS and TRS costs went up, we didn't have reserves to cover them. The board approved reserves last year to, to fund those as they go up and to cover that liability. Should it take a spike in any given year, it allows us to meet that need and cover that responsibility without having to, you know, cut into programs. And again, in New York State, we're very lucky to have these fully funded pension programs where we can count on responsible funding levels. Our debt service reserve is a reserve that's been created largely by bringing in capital projects under budget historically as a district. And, and also with this crazy interest rate environment that we're in, districts like North Syracuse that have a very good credit rating were able to sell our bonds at a premium. Well, those funds all go into a debt service fund, and it, it's our hope to be able to talk to the board in the future about, you know, using that money to avoid taking on additional debt or paying down debt in the future. Again, that, that, that's good for the district, good for the taxpayers. Vehicle bonding, we are very happy with our gasoline-powered buses. This is our second year of, of, of operating with the buses, and, and so the purchases we are recommending making this year, again, are ten sixty-five passenger buses and two forty-two passenger buses for special needs. And then we're going to buy a bucket loader for M and O team. Thirteen vehicles in total are about one point seven million dollars. The tax impact is relatively low because of the fact that our transportation aid ratio is about eighty point four percent. So this represents about a dollar seventy-three per year for houses assessed at a hundred thousand dollars before star. And I want to emphasize, our goal really is to not have very many buses over ten years old. We still do. If you look carefully on the road, you'll see, you know, our transportation team does a great job caring for our buses, but you know, we've got a, a, you know, a, a number of buses that are over ten years old, and so we need to continue with this vehicle program until we get the average age of our fleet down a, a little bit more. And remember, the reason for that is when buses are, are ten years old or older, we start to have major systematic problems, engines, transmissions, very expensive repairs, and reliability. And because we're, we triple-trip our kids, we want to make sure that we don't have situations where kids are getting to school late or, or their routes are being disrupted due to breakdowns, and, and we've had a very reliable fleet, and, and we'd like to keep it that way. And one of the things that I just want to, you know, be very transparent with this, we, we ask Matt every year, we talk to the team every year about why do we need to maintain such a large fleet, given the fact we have declining enrollment? And one of the reasons is we cover such a large geographic area here in, in North Syracuse, our North Syracuse School District. And so for us, when it's, it's really about how long can a kid sit on the bus? And so, you know, yeah, we can have a really small fleet if everybody's willing to have a two-hour commute each way, you know, but, but, and really pack them on the bu, pack them in on the buses, but because we're triple-tripping, we need to be done with the junior high and high school in time to go pick up those middle schools and time to pick up the elementary schools, and we need to be able to do that and not give kids too long on the bus. So as we all know, there's additional development going on in our, in our, in our district. When we go into these new residential communities or apartment areas, you know, we, we need to make sure we can provide the proper transportation. So while our buses probably aren't as full as they were many years ago, they are, they are surprisingly full, particularly when you go to the elementary schools. So that's vehicles. Library, you know, the Slana community is just really lucky to have that sweet library down on the Rox campus, and obviously, they're looking for a very modest increase. We, as a school district, are obligated to include their proposition on our, on our ballots, and, and so we share this information here for that purpose. The, the timeline, we originally were going to ask the board to adopt the budget tonight, but after further discussion, we realized the information came together so late in the game, as you see with my typo here. We just, we pulled this together as quick as we could, and we realized that the board will need some additional time to, to reflect on this presentation, and therefore, Dan has worked with you to schedule a meeting for the fourteenth, two days from now, for possible board adoption. That's all I have. And any questions or comments?
We got new microphones, sorry. For the vehicle bond proposal, so how many, how long does that debt stay on the books?
So we financed the buses for five years.
Okay.
So that's, the, the way state ed works is, and this, this, this is, it's, it's not a new change, but it's relatively recent that state aid is provided to us over a five-year period. So when we buy a bus, we get our eighty point four percent aid over a five-year period, and we bond the buses. We actually do a bond anticipation note, and we use it almost like a revolving line of credit. The board approves us to permanently bond them, and we would do that if we needed to, but we have been basically paying for a bus over a five-year period, matching the aid with our local contribution to, to fund the cash flow.
So every year we have five bonds?
Every year, we have five years worth of buses we're paying for. Yes, that's, that's right.
All right. And then for our interest revenue? Is that the interest on the reserves? Is that what it was?
That's the interest on, on all of our funds. And as you guys know, that at certain times of the year, we're flushed with cash, and at certain times of the year, we're tighter. Usually, when we get our state aid earlier in the year, we get our tax levy collected. That's when we're in a higher cash position, and, and we've tried to use, I don't, I remember last year, we introduced night class. We changed our investment policy to use that. Most of our funds are invested in money market funds. The yield curve is so flat right now that you just, you can invest for a long period of time, but you just don't get very much money putting, putting money in for a long period of time. Night class allows us to take advantage of longer-term investments, but, but the yield curve is so flat that it's not really yielding very much.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
And is there, for our reserves that we have, is there a limit on that? You know, we have the fund balance limit.
Yeah, they're actually, in particular for the ERS and TRS reserves, you can't have, it's a percentage, and I apologize off the top of my head. Paul, jump in here if you knew the number, but.
I think it's, you can't put more than two percent of payroll per year, but you can't exceed ten percent in the, in the whole fund at any given time.
Thank you.
Okay.
I should have put that on the slide. That's a great, great question.
And then for the sales tax revenue, we know we're getting the same amount as we did last year.
Well, you know, the sales taxes have been down
Right.
Just because of the economy, the way the economy's been. But we're, we're anticipating with the economy bouncing back that we'll at least get what we expected to get last year. That was kind of the logic in that budgeting. We don't, we don't know, but we're making an estimate.
Right. All right. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Oh, just a couple of comments and anybody else, please, or anybody who was on the Budget Subcommittee. I just didn't want it to be strange that I didn't make comments or questions, but having seen this on and off over the last couple of months on the Budget Subcommittee, I mean, I'm very pleased, obviously, and, and didn't expect to be where we are right now. But I'm confident that this is a, this is a great proposal being put before us. I mean, I looked at where we were, and Dan and his cabinet were doing a phenomenal job of triaging out, I think, what was felt we needed to do to provide the students with what was needed based on what had gone on with COVID and everything else. And we were in a position where we were going to make some really tough decisions on how to fund that, and what else we were not going to be able to do. And that's where we were before everything changed overnight, literally, with the budget. So I, I'm still taken aback because I, I've been kind of, you know, in one side or the other of this business for a long time, have never seen anything quite like, not at all like this. But, you know, whi- which was nice is, is Dan and the team had everything that they had, kind of like the wants and the needs list there, ready to bring back when all of a sudden the funding was there. So I'm cautiously excited, I'll use that word, as we go forward, that we're really going to be able to move through this. You know, I've read a lot about the budget, like I'm sure most of you had, and, you know, I've read the comments, the negative comments about what they're calling the Robin Hood budget, but you know, they've, they've put out a three-year plan with regards to the foundation formula, which again is, is refreshing. I never thought I'd see that. So I'm hoping to see the funds come in that. I do know they have some wealth, a, a wealth tax out there, a corporate tax out there, they sunset over time. And there is a, and I'm not a, I don't know the details, but there is some kind of circuit breaker for seniors with regards to property taxes also in there. So this budget does a lot of really neat things, but the revenue stream is projected to be there, and I'm looking forward to moving into this. And, you know, the one thing that I know, we talked about a lot, that you know, as part of nixing it last year and before, was the math director. And I'm, I'm really pleased that we're going to be able to get that because I know how important that was, but it was just something we weren't even going to be able to do before this all happened. So thank you.
I just want to make one final comment, and that is in doing all this work, it has truly been a team effort. My cabinet, but also principals, directors, union leadership at the NSCA, and also the teaching assistants. We've looked at middle managers. We've looked across the entire organization at things that are, are needed that we've lost over time. And with, with everyone's effort, we've been able to come up with something where we're able to put some things back to help our organization and the kids. So I, I want to thank everyone because it's, it's really come together and it's been long overdue.
Could I make a, I want to make a comment. We need to thank our state legislators. Al Sterpi for years as our Assemblyman has been there for us. But Senator May and Senator Mannion, who were both former teachers, really fought for this budget, and also Pam Hunter, that represents part of our district. We couldn't have done this without them in Albany, and we need to thank them personally down the road.
Thank you. Other comments? Okay. We do not have an action in front of us. We do not have comments from the and do we have any comments, Mr. Bowles, that you want to? I know it's not on here.
Yes. So first thing, we, today was the first day for our K-four students to start back five days a week. I was able to get to Lake Shore Road in Cicero Elementary, and it was wonderful. The kids were getting off the bus, they were smiling, everyone had their mask on. Teachers were welcoming them as they were coming through the hallways. It was refreshing to see just more students coming through. I'm going to be making my way to the other elementary schools tomorrow, not only before the kids come in, but I want to see the dismissal. I think the dismissal time is also pretty busy as kids are exiting. Was also able to get to the high school in Gillette today, and we're making our rounds this week, but the secondary next week will be coming back four days a week, so we'll be deploying just our, our people from the district office at these locations to just check on things, see if there's any needs and partitions, we're calling them partitions, we're trying to stay away from barriers, that word, but things are up in different schools, looking at the lunch procedures as well as transportation. And Lori Cook was deployed also, taking pictures. So you'll be seeing some things showing up on individual school and district websites. So that will be happening also next week at the secondary. We did have a situation this weekend that did make some, some news. There has been some follow-up and a, a, a public statement that has come out, and again, we, we condone sportsmanship and, and, and fair play, and we want to teach our young men and ladies as they're competing, teamwork and working together and safety at all times, and those are the messages that we want to convey, and we do not look at when the, when the student gets injured, it, it hurts us all, and we want to make sure that people are safe and that we, we wish individuals well. Other than that, we did have, with dismissal, we, we charted. Other than that, we did have with dismissal, we, we charted how that went at all the elementary schools. The last building with getting all the kids out on the bus was 346 today. So even though there are more students that were leaving, the buildings are very efficient in moving our students in and out and getting them home safely. And I believe that's the last comment for, for today.
Okay, thank you. And I look at this and we have, there was on the timeline that Don just showed us the April 14th special meeting this week. And this is Gibson, we polled, we're, that's going to, was the consensus to go forward via Zoom?
Yes, we're going to be going forward with Zoom with that.
And that simply will place the budget before us. Any comments or discussion, obviously, before us, and then we vote?
Correct.
Okay. And that'll be six o'clock?
Yes.
Hey, if there are no questions, comments, concerns, I would entertain a motion for German motion from Mr. Marizio, second from Mr. Crabtree. Any discussion? Haven't done this in person in a while. All in favor? Oh, thank you very much. We are adjourned.